Public hearing contains the specific call in number for those members of the public who wish to comment on any applications before the commission. Because in person attendance at public meetings is likely to increase the risk of transmission of COVID-19. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B. Commissioners and town staff are participating by webex, webex, and members of the public can view the meeting live on West Hartford Community Television. Or on West Hartford Community Interactive Comcast Channel 5 and Frontier TV Channel 6098. Or at WHCTV.org. Meeting is also being recorded for on demand viewing which will be available on the town's website. Because of the virtual format, there are some special rules and procedures that I need to cover before we begin. First, I ask all participants to please mute your devices when you are not speaking. If you wish to be recognized, please raise your hand and I will call on you. If you are participating via audio only or I do not call on you and the debate is ending, then please unmute your phone. And let me know so that I can recognize you. Second, I would like to describe how the hand raising process will work. Unfortunately, our conference technology does not allow for us to identify individual callers by name. So when the public comment portion of the meeting begins, the moderator will randomly unmute one call in line. And ask everyone to say their name at the same time. The voice that we hear will belong to the person whose line is unmuted. That person will then be recognized by the moderator and asked to restate their name and provide their street address. We will repeat this process until we have unmuted every phone line. It is very important that you say your name each time you are prompted by the moderator. If the moderator unmutes a phone line and does not hear a voice after the prompt, that phone line will be removed from the conference. If you have called in and are also streaming the meeting on YouTube or watching on television, please silence your other device when you speak. Otherwise, there will be an echo because there is a slight delay in the TV and streaming broadcast. Third, pursuant to Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B, all speakers must state their name and title each time they speak. Fourth, because of the difficulty in tallying voice votes on a video conference, I will require that all votes be taken by roll. I will now call the roll. Kindly unmute yourself and state your name and that you're present. Full Commissioner Cormier.
Yes, Cindy Cormier, Commissioner, present.
Thank you. Full Commissioner Howard.
Commissioner Howard, present.
Commissioner Lewis.
Commissioner Lewis, present.
Commissioner Tarutin.
Commissioner Tarutin, present.
And I am Commissioner Margolis, present. So we have five full commissioners. Alternate Deborah Cohen is not here this evening. Alternate Carl Franzen.
Alternate Commissioner Carl Franzen, present.
And Alter, Alternate Commissioner Julie Harris.
Alternate Julie Harris, present.
Thank you. So for our first agenda item, we will have the five full commissioners seated to vote. That is Cormier, Howard, Lewis, Margolis, and Tarutin. Our first agenda item is a waiver of a 90 day delay of demolition by homeowner Kobe Insigne Benita. For a structure at Seven Waterside Lane. Before I ask Mr. Benita to speak to us, I will inform the commissioners and the member of the public. Who may be watching this, what this, what this waiver is about. Chapter 58, Section 6 of the West Hartford Town Ordinance refers to demolition of certain buildings. If any building is 500 square feet in size or larger and more than 50 years old. The permit for demolition will not be issued until, until there, well, once the permit for demolition is issued. There is a 90 day waiting period. And in order to waive that waiting period so that the structure can be demolished immediately. One of three things has to happen, there either has to be. The building is part of a land use application such as a special development district. The building is posing significant risks to public safety and then the building officials can determine that the building needs to be demolished. And the third option is that the owner of the property obtains a written determination. From the West Hartford Historic District Commission and from the Connecticut Historical Commission. Which is now the State Historic Preservation Office, that the structure to be demolished is of no historical significance. So I do have a letter from the State Historic Preservation Office. But Mr. Benita, I would love for you to unmute yourself and explain to us why you're here before the commission.
Why you're here before the commission tonight. Good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for calling the special meeting. It is my wife's dream to leave on the lake. I don't know why, but that's her dream and my job is to make her dream come true. So we found a property on Seven Water Lake, Seven Waterside, which is right on the lake. The problem is that the house was built in 1950 and nothing was done to it since. I mean, I mean nothing. Everything original, the house is pretty small, it's about, I don't know, 17, 1800 square feet with the basement. And it's in terrible shape, definitely not a shape to live in. And our purpose is to demolish the house and our plan is to demolish the house and rebuild it. I don't believe there's any historical significance to the house at all. It sits on a beautiful property, but the house needs to be demolished and rebuilt. So that's why we would like to ask your permission to demolish the house and rebuild on that same footprint of the house. We're not going to make mention out of it, it's going to be on the same footprint. It's a cape at the moment, which will transform into a colonial. So we may build over the garage and add a one car garage to the existing one car garage to make it a two car garage. But that's about, that's about it. So we don't have any plans to make it mention or anything big. Just a modest home of around 20, 200, 2300 square feet plus the basement. So that's the plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Benita, I'm going to mute you again because for some reason there's an echo. So I do have, and I sent out to all the commissioners, I do have an email. From Mrs. Jenny Schofield at the State of Connecticut Historic Preservation Office. She tells us that the property at Seven Waterside Lane is not currently listed. And in general, a cape from this era is not likely individually eligible for historic listing. I did do a drive by yesterday. I don't know if any of the commissioners went by, but it's a, it's a very, very unremarkable structure. Let's say it that way. Town records show it as being built in 1950 and of 1642 square feet. It is certainly in very poor condition at this point. I would almost be willing to say that its only redeeming feature is the lake that abuts the backyard. So. Commissioners, does anyone have comments on this that they'd like to, that they'd like to address? Cindy Cormier.
I wanted to say, Mr. Benita, that I'm pleased to hear that you're building a new structure within the same footprint. As opposed to, my mom lives in Avalon, New Jersey, where they take down a house and then build, you know, a three story property in the, fully in the, in the land. Which you of course could do, but I think for the character of, the charming character of that wood pond, I'm happy to hear that. Although you could do whatever you want.
Yeah, I will mention that, I'm not sure if it was an exact neighbor, but there are some houses right along that little stretch. That are much larger than not only the property that Mr. Benita is planning to demolish, but much larger than the structure that he's planning to build. So. Any other comments from commissioners? Hearing and seeing no hands raised, I would like to make a motion that the West Hartford Historic District Commission. Waives the 90 day delay of demolition for Seven Waterside Lane. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Cormier, I'm happy to second.
Thank you. Okay, vote please. Commissioner Cormier?
Yes, approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Howard?
Approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Lewis?
Approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Tarutin?
I vote to approve.
And Commissioner Margolis, I also vote to approve. So Mr. Benita, your waiver of the 90 day demolition delay has been approved. I will send an email when the meeting is over to the building department. And from there, I'm sure they will have detailed instructions for you about getting a demolition permit. So. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you guys very much. Thank you, Mr. Margolis and the rest of the committee. Appreciate it very much. Stay safe, be well. Happy holidays to everybody. And whenever the house is ready, you're welcome for a cup of coffee. It's going to take a few, a few months, but feel free to stop by and say hello.
Thank you kindly. You're welcome, you're welcome to stay on the meeting and you're welcome to drop off as well. It's entirely up to you. We won't be offended either way.
I'll drop off because I have another meeting, so I'll just drop off. Thank you so much, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. All right. Next item on our agenda is a certificate of appropriateness for 1569 Boulevard submitted by homeowner Mitch Lewis. For replacement of shiplap siding on detached garage. Now, as Mr. Lewis is a commissioner, he will obviously not be voting on this. So I will be seating Alternate Commissioner Franzen for this vote. So this will be voted by Full Commissioners Cormier, Howard, Tarutin, Margolis, and Alternate Franzen. Mr. Lewis, would you tell us about your project, please?
Sure. At the rear of my property, it's a, I have a detached two car garage. That's not utilized for purposes of parking your car. It's about 400 square feet. And the proposal, this, they, so the siding is a wood siding and it's five and a quarter shiplap wood. And so the proposal is to match that shiplap and to wall in the, the second car bay to the right. As you look at it there. That's it.
Okay, I, I have to admit, I didn't really understand that from your, from your COA. But now I do read that the work is to wall in the right hand garage bay with wood boards. So you're, to be clear, you're going to remove the right hand garage door and match the siding that's on the rest of the garage, correct? Okay. Sorry, that was not clear to me. Maybe it was to everyone else, but I didn't, I didn't understand that. Commissioners, do we have any comments or questions for Mr. Lewis?
I'm, I'm just curious why you're walling it off. What, you're not using it for cars, just out of curiosity. What are you doing in that building? Not that it's any of my business, I guess.
I have a workshop. That's a great question. I have a workshop there and it's unfortunately, and this would never pass the test today. But both of the doors are aluminum, you know, metal, the crummy metal ones that, that rise up. So it's not really anything to look at per se. It's not utilized. I use the, the, the second, you know, garage door as the entry and exit. But, you know, it's just, it's a utility thing and it's, I think it would improve the, the, the look of it. I think it would, you know, I think it would be an improvement.
I would just ask, it's Carl Franzen, whether, I understand it can be definitely seen from the road, right?
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
Yeah, so that's not an issue. I mean, it is an issue, but.
I guess I'm a little not concerned. I'm wondering about the aesthetics of basically having a building that's a two car garage and, and one side is, or I can't say boarded up. One side is sided and the, the other side has a door. I'm wondering how that's going to look. I assume there are no other properties in the district that have done this?
Not that I'm aware, but I haven't really talked with folks.
Okay. And I guess just another, maybe it's an out of line question, but why not just leave it the way it is? Do you really feel that the aesthetics of, of having the wooden siding on the right hand bay is going to be better than, than having the aluminum garage door with the fake panels on it?
I don't have an answer for that. I think it's, you know, I, it's not used today. It's, I don't know. I just didn't think, I didn't think about keeping it. I've had it there for 10 years and I don't, it wasn't original to the house. It was subsequent to it, but I don't, I have no idea. I tried to look at the records on when it was added. So it's been since 1920 when the house was built, but, you know, maybe it was 30s or 40s when it was built. But, you know, I just wasn't wed to having two, you know, two bays. I wanted to have just the one I used, the left bay.
Mitch, okay, Commissioner Tarutin, is it, is it even visible from the street? Cause I've not been able to see it.
It is, I mean, I have a, I have a low, I have a three foot fence in front. But you can, if you, if you're on your tippy toes, you can see the garage. You might not be able to see the doors, but you can see the top of the garage and maybe the header. Which is, which is white and maybe the, the top row of the, of the shiplap that's there. It's all just painted white. But it's not super visible, but you know, I bet basketball players can see it pretty well.
I thought, I thought our basketball player moved out quite some time ago.
Yeah, he did. He did.
Commissioner Cormier, I see your hand raised.
So I'm confused. When I look down your driveway Mitch and there's that little building, that's not what we're talking about?
No, that is. It's the only building back there. That's the, that's a, that's a two car garage.
It's, I, it's pretty visible, right? I mean, right down your driveway, there's this small little building. I just want to make sure there's no other building back there that I'm missing.
No, that's it.
I would caution that visually, it will probably look a little unbalanced. Like it was a boarded up, you know, spare bay. If you just put shiplap up on the side or the siding up, that's, that's the same, which is great. But it won't look so intentional. It might look like a, you know, a fix or a Band-Aid for something.
Commissioners, any further questions for Mr. Lewis?
I guess I have another question. So is there a way to incorporate a door like, you know, siding that looks like a door that doesn't operate like a door? Like, as Pam's saying, it, one side's going to be shiplapped. So, I mean, I've, I've seen garages that are just one car garage with space on the side. But is there any opportunity to incorporate the design of a door so it still looks like a two car garage, but doesn't function like a two car garage? Or is that something we as commissioners would frown upon?
Well, I mean, there, to the, on the left hand side, but not facing the road, but facing the neighbor. Was a, a standard door entry and exit that's been walled up. That's never been there in all the time that I've had, had the place. So that's, and it's, and that's all covered with a shiplap. So it's, it goes way back, but you can see, you can see the outline from the inside. I do bring in, you know, large boards and stuff that I don't know if they would make it through a normal door if I wall in both, both bays. And put in just a regular walk-in, you know, one person doorway. I think that would look a little bit funny too, but I don't know. But.
I think, or tell me if I'm wrong Cindy, but are you, are you talking about keeping the left hand bay as a garage bay? So for, for that very reason, you can get large items in and out. But having the right hand bay, you know, look like it's still a two car garage from the outside, but really it's a permanent wall that's closed and sealed off from the elements for you. But it mirrors, you know, both sides look the same like they do now.
Well, that was the intention, was to use the frame for that door, but just to wall it in. And have it be, have it be recessed so that it, it uses the same shiplap boarding, but that it fills that hollow and that it was going to be flush with the, the siding that's there. So there is today, there's a six inch recess between the edge of the wall and the door that rises up. And it was going to keep with that and just maybe have it be four inches or five inches deep and, you know, just have it, have it be that, but have it be just a solid, you know, solid wood wall.
So you're actually planning on leaving the garage door behind the new wall so that if the next owners?
Well, I don't, uh.
Or are you saying the wall won't be flush with the outside? You'll still keep that recess where the door exists right now, but that's going to be based on the siding.
That's, that's correct. That's what I'm saying.
That actually makes, I think that makes more sense, actually.
And Mike, to answer your question, I haven't decided whether I'm going to remove the riser door or, you know, it's just going to be, it's going to be hidden and it's going to be tucked in. And maybe that could be a winter time project that I decide to do it, but for, for purposes of, it would just be a, a double wall that would be completely invisible now because it would just be walled in. But it would be recessed like the rest so that it looks distinct, but it would be matching the side. So it would be of a type.
So the, so the evidence of the garage will still be there, the frame. So you would know it was once a two car garage that's been closed up. Okay, I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah. Or Cindy.
Yeah, that, that makes more sense to me too, because first I was worried it was going to be one flat surface when you sealed it off and I thought that would be a little.
No, that's not the plan. It's to, it's to keep, it's to keep the, keep that bay integrity as it were, just the functionality disappears.
All right. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Lewis? I hear the conversation waning. Madam Moderator, are there any members of the public online who would like to, to discuss this?
There's no one on the line currently, no.
Thank you very much. In that case, I would like to make a motion to accept the certificate of appropriateness. For 1569 Boulevard submitted by homeowner Mitch Lewis to replace shiplap siding on his detached garage. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Commissioner Tarutin.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Cormier, how do you vote?
Commissioner Cormier, I vote to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Howard?
Commissioner Howard, I vote to approve.
Commissioner Tarutin?
I vote to approve.
Commissioner Franzen?
I vote to approve. Carl Franzen.
Thank you. And Commissioner Margolis, I also vote to approve. So Mr. Lewis, your certificate of appropriateness has passed unanimously. I will inform the building department as such. Have you, I don't even know that you need a building permit for this, but they'll be informed of it anyway.
Terrific. I'm not aware of that, but yeah. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, guys.
Yes, sir. So I now reseat Mr. Lewis as the secretary and I. And I would like to move to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of our October 26, 2020 minutes, which I, at one point, had on my screen. There they are. So October 26th, let's see. Commissioner Franzen was missing, and there was one other who was missing. We had Cormier, Howard, Lewis, Margolis, Cohen, and Harris. So does anyone have comments on the October 26 minutes? Okay, then I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 26 as posted on the town website. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Howard, I second.
Thank you. And the only commissioners that can vote on this are those that were present at the 26 meeting, so that would exclude Commissioner Tarutin. So Commissioner and Commissioner Franzen. Commissioner Cormier, how do you vote?
I vote to approve the minutes of the October 26 meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Howard?
Commissioner Howard, I approve, or I vote to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Lewis?
Commissioner Lewis, I approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Margolis also approves. Commissioner Cohen is not here, so Commissioner Harris?
Commissioner Harris, I vote to approve.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is commissioners' concerns and comments. Does anyone have anything to discuss this evening? Hearing nothing, I would like to...
I don't know. It's not a concern, but Cindy Perini had sent me the request for the 2021 schedule, and I completed it. And she said, "Has it been approved by the commission?" I said, "No, not yet, but I'll let you know if it's not." I don't know on such short notice if that's something that we want to discuss here or maybe later in the January meeting, but I had sent you a copy with the dates and stuff, but I don't know what, you know, whether we want to table that or discuss it here. But it's kind of timely.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure that we really need to discuss it. The only one to me that might be tricky, and I have to admit, I don't remember, do we meet on the last Monday or the fourth Monday of the month? I think it's the fourth Monday.
Fourth Monday.
Fourth Monday.
Thank you. So the only one that would have been tricky then would have been Memorial Day weekend in May if we were the last Monday. So I don't think we need to discuss this, Mitch. I think you can just submit it with fourth Mondays.
I did, and I told her there would be, I would submit with changes if anything material came up. But we're looking at May 24th and 5:00 p.m. virtual meetings across, you know, down the line. Yep.
Yep, I think that's perfect. Remember, we do not meet in November because of Thanksgiving.
Or December.
Although, or December because of Christmas. So it'll just be the first 10 months that we have meetings.
Yep.
Any other commissioners' concerns or comments? I would like to take 10 seconds to thank Town Clerk Cindy Perini for her help over the years for this commission. She is leaving the town clerk's office. I got an email from her today. So I just want to publicly thank her for all the legal notices and agendas being posted and certificates of appropriateness being emailed. So Cindy, if you see this, thank you very much. In that case, it is 5:41 p.m., and I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very kindly for your time and your service.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Goodbye, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you.